All right, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And it is exactly six thirty. So any additions to the agenda? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Any public comments? Nobody's online? All right, not hearing any, we'll keep moving.
It's just.
All right.
Getting else connected, right?
It's all.
Yeah, yeah, we can see.
Yeah.
All right, so next is approval of the minutes of the August fifteenth, twenty twenty four meeting. Do I hear any motion to?
Can I interrupt?
Yeah.
Our secretary isn't here.
Oh.
But we are recording the meeting and there will be a transcript, so. Automatically, so I'm happy to acknowledge the transcript in the minutes.
Okay, we ask her, but she's at the meeting. Is someone willing?
Taking minutes at this.
Yeah, is somebody willing to take minutes?
I was. Definitely.
I rejected with you.
I can attempt.
They don't have to be long and like brevity is a good thing in minutes.
All right, I'll give it a shot. I don't have my computer, so. No, I actually shouldn't take that on because I won't, I won't do it.
Okay.
If I grab a laptop downstairs, that would help.
That would help. Then I might be able to do it.
I saw this meeting is gonna be fairly short and limited.
All right, well.
Mostly by getting email addresses to people, which we're not gonna have much reporting.
And I'm not all right with a cleaned up transcript personally.
You want me to do it?
Sure.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Since you've done it, you're so scary.
All right, so minutes tonight will be taken by Mike Solow. All right, so minutes from the August fifteenth, twenty twenty four meeting. If you haven't had a chance, there is a copy here on the table if you haven't looked it over. A motion to?
I move to approve the minutes of August fifteenth, twenty twenty four meeting.
A second.
My second.
Any discussion? Okay, I think we'll take it to a vote, so all in favor of approving the minutes of August fifteen?
I agree.
All right, all opposed? Any extensions? Okay, great, we have minutes approved. All right, so the next agenda item is trustee email accounts.
That's me. So we have set you all up with an office account. So look, we actually have a whole office suite, you can use as much as you want, including a shared environment in SharePoint. And the basic process for this is you're gonna get the app on your phone, I hope you all have your phone. Because we need to.
No.
You don't?
Okay.
You have a tablet.
You have the tablet, so I will try to log you and save you in, so that you can access your email. Huh?
Laptop.
And a cell phone. So you need, this is gonna require two factor authorization to sign in, and so I'm here to help you set that.
Right, but it cannot be set up on laptop?
It can be set up on a laptop, but we should set you up with an authenticator. Right now, I'm a backup authenticator for all of you, so I can, those of you who don't have a cell phone, I can log you in hopefully. And did you bring?
No, I didn't. Well, we told at some point to bring our cell phones, I'm just wondering.
I sent an email. Said if people have one.
Okay, I didn't see it, but that's on me that I didn't see.
But you're, but you're here, right?
Hmm?
You're, Sam's here, but you're here. Yeah, it doesn't.
Believe me, I.
Send you off and make it so you don't have to think about it.
Yeah.
Hopefully. So the process is you're gonna get the app first, those of you who don't have the app, full type. And then I have put your, this is worst practices, your email and your new password on this document. And I'm just gonna give you these. The thing is, you can change your password, so this is just for right now, so for the chair. Vice Chair. Up here.
Who is the? Carol is the vice chair.
Okay. Treasure.
Yeah, Mike.
Secretary, not here. All right, you get to be trustee one, trustee two, trustee three. Yay! And I've got everyone else here. So for those who have your cell phone, go ahead and get the app. For those who don't have a cell phone, on your laptop or tablet, go to office.com.
Yep. So I can't hear.
So what's the app?
It's the Microsoft Authenticator, so I put, it's two QR codes, Android, and I think, and then next to it is the Microsoft Authenticator, it would be I twenty to look for.
I need a lot of help, and we said Dennis and.
It's all good.
Just say.
What if you take a?
Go to office.com.
I'm not on, I'm not online.
Oh, yeah, you need to be online. It's right here, go to office.com.
What's it called?
Office.com.
No, 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 this is on the phones. Is this the same office that?
So you go to the.
First of all, I don't have, I don't have, my laptop doesn't read this, I don't have an app yet to read it.
You don't have a photo app on your phone?
It's just through the phone.
I'm not on the.
If you just open your photo thing.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Like you're gonna take.
Like a camera.
Or go to your app store and look up. Yeah.
I can't get on, so.
Yeah, that should be true. Can you go to the wifi?
Yeah. This way. And then start on this one. I guess it popped up.
Do we have to have authenticators send us notifications?
Yes, set it to send notifications, and now go back to your browser.
I know, I mean, I'm saying like. Usually, once it reads it, it will.
Why?
Pops up.
I don't know. But if it takes too long, just go to the app. We've got Microsoft Authenticator.
I'm here.
Oh, you got it? Yeah, awesome, but I probably really need to put the news. So yes, and do you have a tablet or a laptop? Uh, I do have a laptop. All right, let me show you the process. So you're gonna go to office.com, go to sign in. And I'm just gonna use mine.
First time. Oh, you're doing it.
Library.org, it's the one that I just gave you.
You're right there, thank you. Microsoft.
Are you at the outside?
I'm at this, because I have accounts already, apparently. I've had to use this app. So this is your. You're using a trustee one.
But I think I need.
Library.org.
What if I just do this?
Do I put that here under email?
Yep, that's it.
But mine's stuck thinking. Maybe it's because I'm not on the phone.
Yeah, get on the wifi things we love most.
The wonderful.
Okay, hold on, please.
So this would be a worker school account?
Yes, worker school account. And in fact, do you have your laptop with you? So I'll show you as well, so when you sign up, you get the authenticator set up. Um, you're gonna get a number, eighty-eight, you hit yes, and then it logs you in. Yep, and then once you're in, it'll ask you to stay signed in and just say yes. Okay. So that's the process at home, so office.com, when you're logged in, there is, I put the icon, it's a grid, click on that, you'll have all the office suite. So for you guys. Gonna do this. And you can also come visit me at the desk. Which I love to do.
Who's this?
You can still.
Yes. Did you? Uh, so, yeah, well, I'm not a generator, but it's a four-word generator, which is more secure than the twelve. Granted, it's three.
Well.
Save the password?
Yes.
So, you know, it proves to me.
I did.
I've been trying for a long time to.
Yeah, let me try again, okay.
Figure out like one solution for everybody.
Yeah.
But, you know, you're in the library all the time, and I know you don't, you know, have, like, your computer's not, you know.
Well, it's a desktop when I'm running one in Windows seven.
Okay, I was trying to figure out, I was saying, we'll go with great reason. So, you know, honestly, I mean, I can always have board documents printed out waiting for people at the library, we schedule the meetings. Sometimes you have to move around.
Trustee three, what's the number you got? Twenty.
So, um. I'm just thinking like, you're, you're welcome to do this differently.
Well, no, I'm familiar with Sam.
And I get the dot line.
Oh, yeah.
Does, does this mean we're no longer using a Google search?
Okay, hit next. And now, oh, hold on.
That. There's no suppression, right?
There it is. All right, to the next.
All right, so let's wait.
Next.
And then swap something in.
Go back.
Thank you. No, show us your phone. Uh, yeah, you don't want to, doesn't need to share the.
I'll wait to have this.
My left phone. I'm waiting. Until I do it on my laptop and change.
On my internet?
I get that simple.
Office.com.
I don't think it's that simple.
Um. That might, yep, uh, and then it should be on there somewhere, or?
So Mike is, um.
Maybe it's that one.
Has the app now then?
It's gonna take you back. So we're. Office.com, put in your email, put in the password. I think we're good. Let's be going back.
Oh, no, not assigned.
I hope it keeps me logged in.
Right?
When I, once I go. Wait, what happens once we get this?
You. Go ahead and scan. You tell Sam. Oh, okay, what's your number?
Thirty-five.
Very good. Your authenticator is set up on that device, so when you try to log in your laptop, you're not gonna have to go through this. And then.
Now you.
It'll just give you a number, and then you'll type it in. Add my scan and Q R. There, all right.
There you go. Okay. I'm gonna need you to know how to do this on my desktop, because that's how I filled out.
Okay.
What if you don't?
I'll change that.
Yeah, scan the QR code. All your phone will be is, when you log in, if it wants that third factor, all your phone is gonna be doing this. Everything else is gonna be.
Reactor.
Available. From our. She's over.
It wasn't gonna be on my desktop with me.
That'd be very old school.
I am very old school.
So how do we get?
I see the city.
Here, like what app?
The library.
Yeah, so you're gonna go to.
As a check of yes?
Oh, I'm not sure if I know the answer.
Then I go.
It's gonna be Outlook, which.
I haven't.
Okay.
So.
Haven't.
Have this. I've used Outlook on my personal computer.
Right.
I don't have it.
Yeah. Browser-based version, you don't have a. You can't download these programs and install them. Um.
Go back.
So just, we can put in the browsers, the browser address. I just saw my look and it. Oh, thank you. Pop up with what you need. All right.
So.
In the flow, I'll get some.
Outlook. All right, so, will you turn your phone on? Hold on just a quick, no?
Yep.
Will you turn your phone on?
Um, I'm very.
And then go ahead and put up the authenticator. And meet up with the authenticator.
This is probably so exciting, for the recording, we came out.
Yes.
Well, did you download? Pull what you. Sam will go to.
It's actually a shame that we don't go.
Yeah. Authenticator right there. Oh, right. And there's always a way too, to just tell.
But I send you.
To send an email to whatever email you use.
Something.
That's what Sam will do. You just give it a, can I ask you? So it's. Sure. Yeah.
Tend to get.
With a capital T. So this is. Sending Rancher. Okay, so, um, try putting.
Out.
I think you can get through that way, but if you go to the Astro, like browser that thing and put in.
Yes, who hasn't?
So then, oh, and it took you to the. And then five? So. I go to that Microsoft one, I'll probably just sign in, and then you do this, just sign me down.
Well, no, it was.
Can I? Yeah, I may, I tried to make it, I didn't, or I spent. On the. Right before. And we didn't have a landline. And I went, well, what am I gonna do? I got invited. Because I haven't.
Well, for my travels, but I still just tell people.
I don't even have a landline. It's like the cell phone.
Director, yes? Then you come and text me. There you go.
So this is, I'm gonna be using this backwards, so I train, right?
Yes.
So I'm gonna.
Didn't I like it?
It's. It didn't like something, and it could have just been, I tried being mad at him.
I think you're gonna want a lot, a longer.
Right?
A retro player.
Well, it's actually easier to remember, because it's four words versus random strings you're in. And if you forget what it is.
I put on it from the baby.
The one that's on there? Yeah, you'll use that one when you sign in until you change it to whatever you want.
I don't remember.
It's on the picture, right?
Oh, this.
Doesn't think you know.
Right?
I'm just gonna go up here.
Okay.
You're in?
I'm in.
I got a welcome message.
Yeah. Free mail. Do very good what I have.
I was going to write it, or if.
Oh, yeah. It's a long story. There you go.
I wish.
Yes.
Again, because.
So if something. Did you have to come up with all these passwords? The way.
Maybe.
Okay. I was curious where this one came. Did it work?
Fifteen.
Yeah. Yeah, so on the bottom of the page, there's an email, Board of Trustees at RockinghamLibrary.org. That email will email the whole board. Okay. Does it email Ian, so you'd have to add him separately.
What's at the bottom of what page? Are you gonna, oh, if you send an email to that address, to every board member.
And.
That's correct.
If you're sending an email for some reason to everybody, that's why. Other terms. Also.
Yeah.
Yes, worst practices, but.
Director at Rocky Hill.
Very helpful, and once we change our.
Yeah, it's so that if you both communicate about.
So this is happening about. It's like you're forcing an assassination, you mean?
Exactly, exactly.
Congratulations.
It'd have to be golfing, if you go to office.com or your browser. Um, we will do. I don't think I'm on horse, and that's what I need my phone for. Um, so you can follow the steps, and I'll be on the way to your cell phone, and it does walk you through it. Uh, so we can come over here and help you.
I think I.
Okay. Absolutely.
So if, um, you were unable to get your password and the whole account set up, do, please do see Sam when she is here working at the library. And thank you very much, Sam, for organizing all this and getting this set up.
Here's, like I said, you've got a shared environment, you can save documents too. Um.
Oh.
And then the idea with this is that because we administer it, the next person who comes after, who's a physician, we just pass right on.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
You are brilliant.
Agreed.
And you're welcome to stay if you'd like, and you're welcome to leave if you'd like.
Started my day at seven thirty this morning. Ah, oh, yeah.
Sam, is there a time of day that's better to come to talk to you, or is calling the library to ask you, is it anyone who's good to call?
Also, if it's next week, I think most of my mornings are free next week, with the exception of Monday. Uh, but yeah, I think it's all.
Okay.
Ash, have some.
Thank you so much. So does anyone else have anything about trustee email accounts?
Yeah, I don't understand it at all, but we'll fix that. Sam will be able to walk you right through it. Probably not gonna be imperative, and I don't get. Yeah, no, it'll be okay.
All right, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, discussion, building improvements and meetings.
So, um, you know, we are just about done with having the front steps redone, and, uh. There's just a few pieces left, we realized that, um. Um, the lamps should be painted, the railings have been painted, the, finally, after ten years since the work was done. The inspection plates were put at the bottom of the railings, which keeps the rain and the snow and out of the drill holes, and so that's a good thing. And so, um, they also were painted, and, you know, uh, we realized that, oh, we need to paint the lamp posts that are right on the steps too, because, you know. But then we also realized, we need to paint yourself the building, so one of the downsides of having this worked on is that you see everything else that needs to be done, and I just, that's right next to it, so. Um, but already, uh, almost everybody that comes in is like, oh, the steps look fantastic. And obviously, the main reason to do it beyond is that it is looking bad, is that it was going to become a much more expensive problem over time, as all the water got in, snow down and freeze, all that kind of stuff. So that is great. Um, our, our Mason, who did that work, uh, who's excellent, um, he did the work on the roll on the back of the ladder and stuff too. Um, he's eager to do a lot more, and I said, this is good for now, because, you know, this was about thirty-six hundred dollars that he spent, which frankly, isn't that bad for the work that got done. Um, and we have that money, but I do, there's full building repairs and stuff, but now's a good time. Um, probably because seeing that done and then seeing all the rest of it, and even in here the other night, I was just noticing there's new cracks and stuff everywhere. And you started to watch them for a year, because like depending on time of year, though, they are, and they're not yet there and stuff, because everything moves around. But, um, this is a long way of saying that it's time to convene the Building and Grounds Committee. Come up with a list of the different things that need to be done. I'm most grateful for the fact that that list is dominated by the lights and locks, that were a problem a couple of years ago, and those got, those are done, and they never needed to be paid. And so, um, so this means we can, rather than look at things that should just work, like lights and locks, we can look at, you know, if we paint the building. Um, there's some damage down here, where we, one thing we are going to do, uh, is have the ramp pulled up in the activity room downstairs, because we have a leak there.
Yeah.
And we want to know where it's coming from, so we're gonna pull up the whole complicated design with steps here, and a rain queue, and a wall here, or, you know, fence here, and we're gonna pull it all up, just gonna go in, have a straight in, and this ramp down, and that's it. Because we want to keep that open, so we can see over time, is the water coming from the front side of the building, is, there's some belief from the past that it's coming in from the elevator shaft, which would be a different place, and so. It seems like before we get excavators in, it would be nice if we could figure out what direction it might be coming from. It's right out here, where the new building, newish building and the old building come together, it's like a waterfall, when, um, it rains, because there's like five different directions, it's all channeling to that. That's probably the source, so it just depends on, you know, if it's coming from the outside of the shaft, so. And then if you look at the front of the building, to the right of the new entrance, nineteen seventy, so it's not that old anymore, it's older than me, but, um. There's a facade piece that's just green and blue and crumbling. He'd really like to fix that, and I said, you know, we're not gonna fix that until we figure out what's causing that. You know, and so, rather than start to chase things around at a kind of significant expense, we'll convene the committee, we'll look at this, uh. Things that come up, like the step, uh, the ramp and the steps in the activity room that we want to fill up, because it's gonna help us learn about what's going on, and let us, you know, formulate a plan, and we'll do those things. But, um, but we want instead to start to compile a list. The only other thing that is probably relatively urgent now, of course, anything can become urgent when we wake up tomorrow, is the back steps. It's not a publicly used entrance, they're crumbling.
Is it an emergency exit?
It is an emergency exit, but, um, I've been told by the fire marshal that it's perfectly fine as an emergency exit. There's nothing wrong with it, because it's, it's, it's not falling apart, you can go look at it, there's a few places, but it, but it's legit.
Are there cement steps?
Those are cement steps, and so he's, I asked him for a ballpark figure today when he came to, um. Uh, you know, talk about what that one is gonna be next with the front stuff, and, um, he said, yeah, about the same as the front, so we're like, he's a little less, so probably three thousand more dollars to do that. And, um, so, you know.
Why don't we have the committee come together? You can show them some of these areas, and then it'd be great if the committee could kind of create a priority list, you know, not only the list, but prioritize some items. Um, just so we have a couple of year potential plan, barring any emergency that comes up and. Um, just so we, you know, have a progression of ideas.
So, um, is anybody in this room aware of the fact that, other than Ginger, who just joined, that they are on the Buildings and Grounds Committee? Right now, it's Farrell, Jimmy, and Ginger. All right, so seeing no hands, who wants to be on the Building and Grounds Committee? Mike is, okay, so now that committee is now fully staffed, so they are fully membered. All right, cool, so that's, that's basically, yeah, thank you for it.
And so Ian, will you organize convening?
Know each other? Absolutely.
Excellent.
Yep.
All right, so the next item is update on policy revisions, so Ian, I'll let you maybe take that one too?
Yeah, just real quickly, you know, we, we're making good progress on the operational policy, and we had to take a little pause, but, um, now we can re, we can continue that work. And so, uh, we'll convene one more time, I think we're pretty close to the end of that at this point, and, uh, we'll see. I think you and I are supposed to meet next to go over. So Mike and I meet next, and we'll convene the full committee, and then we'll bring it to the board. So, and the, and the personnel policy, we're still waiting, we don't want to get ahead of the town, and the town is still working.
Okay. Well, we still have work to do on operational, so.
Yeah, there's still steps left there.
But right now, the policy committee is Carol, Mike, and myself. Anyone else like to be on that? All right, um.
I think Bonnie would like to.
You think, or you know?
I don't know, but I think, because then I had a conversation.
If we could confirm, he's not here tonight, so when we get to the committee assignments, you know, um. All right, so the FY twenty-six budget, Ian, you're up again.
I know, I mean, this is basically, this meeting consists of, you know, accounts and then convening, you know, working on convening committees, so, um, the finance committee. Um, a couple of people dropped, Margaret, you're on that, Martha, you're on. Mike, are you on? It sounds like you are, no, you're not, but you should be, because you're the treasurer. Like, everybody's here. Oh, um. Uh, and then. Mary, you want to be on the finance committee?
Uh, no, I'm about to be on the historical collection.
Awesome, thank you. Um.
Mike, are you okay being on finance? It does make sense with you being the treasurer.
Maybe I could get off the personnel committee. You can't, because that's. I've signed.
Yeah. It was worth trying.
It was a good shot. So let me say something about finance, really, it only meets for a couple of months in the fall, if it's a budget year, though it's not, yeah.
And it, so is this item on here, because you're gonna convene?
I am convening, because we're gonna first start putting the FY twenty-six budget together, and just so everybody knows, because the whole board does vote to approve the budget to recommend it for the select board to approve. The select board, um, likes to hear from me in early, in mid-November, which is early. Like, we don't have, rather than data at that point, they know that, but they'd just like to know, you know, what we're thinking. And I'm happy to go and make that, I guess it's a good time to go and meet with them, and, and, but then. The full, the final one would be to them, or, so this is when we get into the situation where, um. We often have to have an extra meeting in early December to finalize the budget, and one of the reasons for that is that we don't get some pretty significant, um, impactful information, like the cost of the maintenance. Which is a big one, until the end of November, essentially, and so. We usually vote the budget by the board the first, during the first week of December, and then it gets handed to the select board, and then they start their process. So I would convene that group, um, you know.[1705.78] early October.
Okay.
And, uh, I will have a draft budget, you know, after, to start, like, and release that.
Alright, so will, anything else about the budget?
I don't think so.
Okay. So, oh, yeah, this isn't, this isn't about the budget, um. This is just looking back, that, uh, has the select board got anything regarding Bonnie yet?
Yeah, we'll get to that.
I'm gonna put it in another business.
Oh, thank you.
Okay.
I didn't, I, yeah, I forget.
I was like, oh, it'll fit under it. Alright, so committee assignments, um. So I think we have Ginger was there. Let's see, you are on buildings and grounds.
Mm-hmm. I was also thinking about historical collection after, um, discussing possibilities with Ian.
Okay. Great, okay. It's okay to have five.
I think it's fine.
And mine, did you put me down?
I did.
Interesting, I need to be the list of all the movie members. Definitely.
And Mary, was there another one that you might want to be on, or is one good for you?
One good for now.
Okay. So we need to, um, let's see, Mike is on here, and Ryan is on here, Carol's on here. So we'll just need to check and reform uh, by we, I'm thinking you.
Yep. I've been.
Okay. Alright, so, anything else about, the only other thing about committee assignments, now that we're getting set up in the new emails, uh, once those are set up, be checking them, because several committees, we've just heard, are gonna start convening for a meeting, like buildings and grounds and finance, so. Yeah, and we'll be getting an updated list.
Yes. Mike can have a spot on that. So once it's final.
Thank you. Okay, so other business. So one piece of other business is that the select board did, uh, approve Bonnie North's nomination, so she is now officially on the board.
Congratulations, Bonnie.
And so, yay, Bonnie, we look forward, and she was unable to be here tonight, so, um, she will hopefully be able to join us next time. Any other business? Okay, barring any other business, we'll move on. Um, so anything that, with, for the next agenda, for the next meeting, that people can definitely think of now, this is not their only say in agenda items for next time, but.
Operational policy, I.
Oh, yeah, operational policy. Alright, so barring anything else there, um, warrants, are you, do you have warrants for people this time?
No, we don't.
Okay.
I pointed that out.
Yeah. Alright, um, before we adjourn, I'd just like to confirm our next meeting. Does anyone have that, their calendar open?
Thursday.
Thursday of which month?
November.
November is.
It's gonna be a bad one, isn't it?
The twenty-first. Right, one, two, three.
It's good. It's, no, it's the week before Thanksgiving.
Twenty-first, that would be.
Twenty-first, so, um.
Twenty-first, you're right.
Twenty-first is a Thursday. So, right now, our meeting is scheduled for, um, Thursdays, November twenty-first, at six-thirty PM. Alright, um, so barring that, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting. When is it adjourned?
I second. All in favor?
I.
All opposed?
Alright, so we are now. At seven, two.
I don't know, it's too short, those meeting meetings, like, because I sent it to, to, messy, just helping, we're short.
Careful what you wish for. You know, we could, we could extend it, if you'd like.
I haven't.
Just, I'll stick to your typing.
I have a very easy way to make this meeting last longer.
Yeah, so. Yeah. Mary, we just have to wait a minute.
I think we've got this list from, yes, from Mary.
Things close. These issues are all. I think it's gonna take some patience and. Do you have support on, on doing like this?
Yeah, a lot.
Yeah, that's why we don't have a quick meeting, like, Mike, you're, I can meet. And I've been at the library all day, but we're special. I was eating both.
Even with the talks.
No, I don't. No, I don't. Yes, you are.
I thought that was gonna take forever.
How often?
Well, I could have waited too.
I don't understand it at all, but. Sam and I, yeah, you know, but, there's, there's multiple options. It'll.
Mary, we're, yeah. Teaching me how, when, sorry, go about you, I don't.
They could assume that you have a.
Can't.
Yeah.
I can't. I'm trying to do them every other.
I'm really in a certain way.
I can't, we too long, there's not some.
If you didn't. Have to work with computers at any point, you know, like, everyone's at a different level of comfort.
Yeah.
It's stay with computers, but the state had its own computer edge, and now transfer. It was a system, you know, so, but you had a. You had that system.
And they're not DOS, and then like, I was mad at Windows, so I didn't learn Windows for a long time. And then I finally had. But that underlying background actually helped me, as things shift, meaning, I kind of know what the computer's thinking behind this.
And with, with the state, a lot of, a lot of form letters, and you just call up the letters, and I, I was like, you didn't need to.
It's part of the year.
No.
Okay. And that's just.
Yeah, I'm really happy to help too.
Every other Tuesday, I'll have one ready by.
And as I mentioned, I'm an extenuate, so I bridge the gap.
Good deal.
Yeah. Seventy-seven to eighty-three, so it's where generation X and the millennials overrode, and specifically, seventy-seven. So specifically, computers showed up in school for me, and very, very basic, like, still DOS, in elementary. Um, and so, I still was typing my papers